Okay, um, so, welcome to the September 21st, 2020 meeting of the North Brookfield School Committee.
Did we gotta turn that computer on or not?
Sorry. But we're doing it for you at home, okay? Trying to keep the remote access going. So, um, welcome to the September 21st, 2020 meeting of the North Brookfield School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by North Brookfield LPAC. If there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting, please raise your hand so others are aware. This meeting is also being broadcast via Zoom, and we do have, um, our Zoom requirements.
Um, I'm just, I sent a message to everybody saying, can they hear us? And I think we're a little muffled, so I don't know if it's the mics that they need to hear, or it's just the masks, it might be a little bit of both, but, um, we're working through the LPAC sound. So I'm hoping, um, I'm hoping that it gets better. I'm getting a lot of very staticky.
Is this better? Any better?
That's better.
Okay, alright. So like when we're speaking, speak into our microphones.
Yeah, that's out of there.
Alright, cool. Um, so, the biggest thing is, um, the Zoom meeting, not the biggest thing, the Zoom policy.
Alright, it is as follows, let's see. Alright, so we're now gonna begin a remote meeting through the use of video communication. It's important that we continue to respect the privacy and confidentiality of members of our school community, including our teachers and staff, and our students and their families. By participating in this remote meeting today, you agree that you will not save, record, share, or post this session or any photos from this session. Uh, I will not be recording this session for, uh, any reason, and, uh, it will be, as Mrs. Tucker said, be recorded and reposted by LPAC. If you do not agree to these rules, or don't want to participate in a recorded meeting that will be posted and shared, uh, please disconnect from this session now.
Alright, um, so I just, to let people know, I brought a laptop from home so we can keep an eye on the chat here, and, um, I'm signing under my husband's name, so if you see Kevin Tucker there, that he is actually not here, so. I just wanted to start, I did ask, um, anybody if they had any, any words of appreciation for any of our staff, so I have a few things, I want to start with a little bit of recognition. Thanks to the 5th grade teachers for constantly answering my frantic emails last week when things were just not working right technology-wise, while you were trying to teach in your classroom students as well. I seriously don't know how you do it. Thanks to Mr. Manucci for always answering my phone calls, returning my messages, emails all summer long, and into the first few weeks of school. I know it has been so busy for him, but you would never know. Beckett comes home and can't wait to tell me he got a lot of air high fives from Mrs. Tarantino for being such a good reader. Thanks to Mrs. Priestley and all the staff for just making the first week so welcoming for kids and for myself as a parent. I was so nervous to send my kids back, but I knew they needed to be there, and my nerves were instantly settled on that first day. Seeing everyone so happy, my kids come home every day so excited to tell me about being at school. It's still a warm, fun, clean place to learn. I'd like to give a big shout-out to Mrs. Servant and Mrs. Martin for being so organized and attentive with digital learning so far. Academic assignments are for the most part accessible and not overwhelming. These teachers respond to emails in a timely fashion focused on academic and social-emotional education during this unprecedented time. They've also offered to put better hard copy pickup bags for the students, which is going above and beyond our expectations. We've had some technology hiccups, but they've been great at troubleshooting and trying to eradicate the issues quickly. I'd also like to thank the school secretary, Dresden Renaud, for being so helpful with this transition. The food services and cafeteria staff have also been exceptional with adjusting to the new lunch routine and pickup meals. The school psychologist, Tyler Petrus, and Mr. Manucci have also been responsive to emails and scheduling meetings assessments. It takes a team, and this team that my girls have at NBEES has blown me away thus far. Um, Mrs. Pratt, my kids love seeing her at drop-off. I'd like to shout out Mrs. Martin for remote teaching four grades of students. She has been patient and strength-based and positive. As always, please shout out Allison Bolger. Her job is often overlooked and sometimes thankless, lol, but in our current environment, her task is even harder. I always appreciate her diligence and her humor, especially in a COVID opening. Also, thanks to Dresden, Sheila, and Mary Beth. I'm not done yet. Thank you for being patient, um... To all the teachers out there, we know you do so much more than just teach, thank you. I was concerned, as most parents, how my children would react to the changes and the new look of things at school, on the bus, etc. But when they got home that first day, I was pleasantly relieved that they were just so happy to be back. They didn't really seem to notice or didn't mind the changes. I know how hard it is, and an adjustment for everyone involved in this new world we are navigating. However, the job of school systems must be one of the most challenging. I appreciate everyone's efforts, teachers, support staff, nursing, culinary, janitorial, grounds crew, buses, transportation, and anyone else I may have left out. As a mom and a teacher, I could not be more happy with how the elementary school has turned out for my daughter. The building is bright, warm, and welcoming. I took a peek into her classroom and found a beautiful room that was inviting, and just like a 3rd grade classroom should be. My heart is happy that my child can attend school in person. Thank you to everyone who has a part in this. North Brookfield Elementary School is a magical place where learning, smiles, and laughter still exist. Shout-out to Mr. Stanley at the high school for his postcards and ongoing communication with his students during COVID in the summer, plus the birthday greeting he sent for my daughter. We truly appreciate you and your effort. Um, and then just for myself, um, we had a technological glitch last Wednesday, and my daughter got kicked off of Zoom before she got to share, and Mr. Cervelo called us up and jumped back on Zoom with her so she could, uh, let him know how she was doing, so I appreciate that very much. Alright.
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
I, I really enjoyed the, the videos made for the introduction to the school and the COVID procedures, because, you know, obviously kids can come in ahead of time and learn what was going on, so, um, I enjoyed the cutout buses and the, the production value was commendable, so it was, it was a really nice thing to see, and it was fun. It was a fun watch, and I think it showed them what to expect when they got here. Thank you guys for doing that.
Um, so now we just, we have two minutes that we need to approve. Uh, the regular meeting of August 17th, 2020, and the special meeting of September 8th, 2020. Uh, does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? Corrections or anything? Alright, I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from, uh, regular meeting of August 17th.
And a second? Who said that?
I heard it.
Elizabeth, sorry. I saw her say it, I shouldn't have jumped in.
Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to say, I wasn't there.
Okay. Um, and the, uh, special meeting of September 8th, need a motion for that one too?
I move to accept the, uh, minutes of the special meeting of September 8th.
A second?
That was Ruth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So, we, we have Megan Bogus.
Yep, I see her there. So Megan Bogus is the student representative, so, um, hi Megan, what'd you tell us what's been going on?
Okay, teachers, can we?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, we've had a few things going on through the council for like the last month. I think that's been, the way we've recruited school, where we set schools and all that entry to this school and handed out the V bags and each student's schedule. And we've been, I forget, the visual streamers, Linn, Hank, Big Rock, and some other schools, and a lot of posters around the hall there. Um, we're having a fundraiser for Chromebook covers, and they'll be sold for $15 a piece. And we have QR codes around the high schools, and you can scan it with your phone. You live at this one. And then, see new students, or like people who still live in the school. One of them at first, in council, we also have a QR code for that around the school, so they can just scan it on, and send in a Google Doc with like 20 segment sugar, and then they'll be picked up in. And then, we're still figuring out if we can have homes coming or not, and figuring out the dates of that. And the activities fair coming up. We're planning on having this virtually. We'll send out a Google form for each student to fill out and make a list with us to be listed, assigned forms. And then, they will be added to a Google classroom and posted, and check those days will be checked every week. And that's about it for the year.
So, we're gonna be meeting with the student council, um, e-board, I believe, beginning Thursday on a regular basis, so some of those topics that Megan covered are part of that meeting, like typically they've had an activities fair where students, where student groups are out in the hallways, and kids come up and, uh, find out a little bit more about that club or activity. Obviously, we can't do it in the traditional way, so we're gonna explore some alternative ways to be able to have an activities fair so kids can see what types of, uh, options are available.
So if I understood correctly, every activity, I'll have a Google classroom, and you can sign up to go check it out?
Yeah, we gotta just finalize the details to make it work for everyone.
Cool. Alright, thanks Megan.
Thank you Megan.
So we actually did have correspondence to the school committee, uh, from the commissioner.
Commissioner Riley, yeah.
Yep, um, which, we're gonna address that, actually two letters, one from, what about, actually no, it's just one letter, I guess.
One letter with two pieces, yeah.
Two pieces. Um, and we're gonna move things around just a little bit, so, um, Mr. Lynn's report later on, who's going to discuss what we, what is called the phases of learning. So that's when we make decisions about switching from one mode of learning to another. So we're gonna bring that and discuss that real quickly right now, and then we'll have some time for public participation. And the letter from the commissioner actually is part of that. So Mr. Lynn, if you want to just go over the phases of learning.
Yeah, so the commissioner's letter, there's two parts. The first part is, uh, the Department of Public Health's website, their color-coded health metric, uh, for every town in the state. Uh, and the whole idea was to provide districts with information, um, about the general level of COVID health, for lack of a better term, within their community, so that they could make decisions, and part of those decisions are obviously around school. So we've been working, uh, in the superintendent's association to sort of try to parse that out, and one of the challenges, I think, as I explained in the last meeting, is that every community is so individual. You know, a community like North Brookfield is a small rural community. Having a one-size-fits-all approach to closing versus opening versus a community like Worcester probably doesn't make sense, um, so, um, so what we've worked on is a general sort of guideline to follow, um, where, based on the total number of confirmed cases in the state of Massachusetts, positivity rate would be two metrics that we would use as kind of a guiding light, and then use local contacts with the school committee, the Board of Health, uh, and other local officials to make decisions about whether we should be in remote learning, hybrid learning, or move to all-in-person learning. I think we all understand at this point, all-in-person learning, we're not ready for that, probably in the short term. I don't know what short, how to define short-term or long-term anymore based on, uh, what you hear in the news, but, um, but I think really for us, it's whether we should be in hybrid or remote at this point. Um, and that's what we tried to, to pull together as a superintendent's association was, you know, the whole idea of looking at the number of confirmed cases within a, a community and the state positivity rate, um, and then work together with, you know, Board of Health, other local officials, school committee to say, what's right for our community, given the current conditions and all the local context that goes into that. So forwarded this to the Board of Health, um, and actually had a conversation today with, uh, Mr. Brusso, and he, um, he indicated they're looking at that and would get back to me with some feedback. Uh, I also went back to our superintendent's association and asked for more, uh, if there could be more, and I think that's where we're running.
Alright, Rich, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I, I don't mean to cut in. I mean, this is nearly impossible to hear, and I think you're going over probably a lot of the really important information that people came to hear.
So, you know what?
Am I the only one that can't hear anything with remote? But I'm wondering, would it be possible to just, to just, to, to continue the Zoom meeting and continue the filming, but not go through the LPAC sound system?
Well, the problem with that is then if there won't be any sound on the LPAC. So Rich, can you take your, I mean, we are six feet away, so, if he takes his mask off, see if this is any better.
Elizabeth, is this better?
I don't know, it's hard to tell. It seemed like, it seemed better initially, and then just, it's, yeah, I don't know. We have to, you have to talk a little more. So, so you can't just Zoom the meeting so that people who are remote can hear you through the Zoom, and then LPAC can film it separately, so that, or is that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I think that's the problem we ran into last time, which was, LPAC, you know, was recording us, but we didn't have a way to record the sound, so you, you know...
I know what you said. Yeah, okay.
So, last time, the sound was bad because we had the mic in the room and trying to have it on the web, so you got, at home, you were telling me the sound was bad. Is it any, can you hear me better now?
Not really.
Not really, okay. Um, you know what, we're, let's take a break here in the meeting, okay? So we're gonna, uh, can I get a motion to temporarily adjourn here?
I'll make a motion to temporarily adjourn.
We'll be back, we'll try to be back in like 10 minutes.
A second?
Okay.
Sorry, what are we doing?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn for 10 minutes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we can see if we can make this better.
We'll go get him downstairs.
Although, does he, can he see us?
...
We'll be able to hear us talking on YouTube. They'll post their comments.
Well, what you're gonna do is you're gonna...
And when we find their comments, then they'll be addressed.
So Tim is going to...
Can you guys hear me now? No, not yet. Hello?
What am I gonna do?
So type, you can change the public participation. Because they can watch on YouTube. What you're gonna do, what you're gonna do, what you're gonna do.
Can you guys hear me now? Can you guys hear me now?
Say something again. This is like a rep.
We're recommending listening via YouTube channel.
Hey, okay Maria. We're in a vortex.
What's that?
We're in a vortex.
Yeah, we're watching Star Trek here.
I'm gonna throw it out the window. I don't know what. That didn't work.
Why do you keep going on my phone?
I don't know. That's what the problem is there. People who are on Zoom in YouTube.
Okay, so we can't do that.
Is horrible.
Can we have people on YouTube watching and then chatting on Zoom, but they have to be muted on Zoom?
I, I think so, but I think there's a delay.
Okay.
There's a delay to YouTube?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there is a, like a five-second delay.
Why is it coming out of my phone? Oh, because I went to, I know why. I went to YouTube, so stupid.
I don't know what to do.
Can we just have a, go full-on Zoom, well then they can't...
Should we just, like, try this again?
What if we have a meeting next Monday?
No, we have to have a meeting now. Can we, thank you for...
See, this is YouTube, it's a little behind. We just said, what's going on with my phone?
So, because you have Bluetooth right now, right, Rich?
Yeah.
Your computer.
Yeah. But it's, it's the delay. So Maria said, oh, I have it on my phone, like, whatever, 30 seconds ago, and then it just came out.
So, okay, can we just do a Zoom meeting? And they can record us on Zoom, right? Can we just do that for this evening? Are they, are they signed in on Zoom for us?
Yeah, and these people are all on Zoom.
Yep.
The only, the only difference was the live piece, um...
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, of course, then, when we, you know, we unmute ourselves, is that gonna be a feedback for you?
It's gonna be a nightmare.
So I guess we...
Can we use the microphone of the speaker and plug this, plug it into the computer? Like, what did we do last time, where we had the microphone?
We had the microphone plugged in, but people complained they couldn't hear, or... We had the microphone plugged in, but people complained they couldn't hear very well. But that was working and then it stopped working.
I mean, they can't hear at all now.
Like, it's right in the chat. If you go up, it says, you know, they said they couldn't hear.
Right. So, I mean, honestly, the easiest thing to do, so we can actually have a meeting tonight, is to just do a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, and we would just have to go to separate rooms.
Okay.
Because if we're in the same room, we get all the feedback.
You can use this, I'll use my phone.
Okay.
And hopefully I don't run out of... Do you want to have an iPhone charger?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to use this, and I can go get my computer?
No, no, just use this, because then we'll, otherwise, we're gonna be here forever.
All right.
Should we go on Zoom in another room then?
Jane, do you want to go in my office? I gotta take this to another room then, too, right? Or else it's feedback with Rich's computer?
Yeah.
Send you board. She won't read the other page.
So I think we have to set Maria and Tim up in separate rooms there.
Okay. Yeah, I just need a, I need a charger for my phone. Because I'm like, oh, I won't need my phone. Um, where do you want to go?
I don't have to go far. Like, one room over or something?
Me, right over here?
I'll sit in the hallway if I need to.
We have a nice room over here, and that's a nice room over there, actually. Both rooms are. Yeah, whatever. Pretty nice. A little, you know. That's on Mrs. Clark, our best counselor. Do you want to go there? Sure. Comfy? Oh, yeah. Feel free to move the bearers to third way.
I'll wait down at desk, yeah, remember?
All right, don't worry. Well, I guess I'll be admiring this. Do you have the link?
Uh, it's on, uh, uh, agenda. I'll forward it here.
Thank you.
All right, so we're back.
So we're back.
I can hear myself. It's kind of annoying, but, oh, well. Um... So, Rich, I wondered if you could, it'd be exciting in going over what you were talking about, the commissioner's letter and the phase...
Would it help if people still muted themselves that are nearby?
Well, I just, it's because I'm right next to the, the, um, school committee room, that's all. Other than that, it's fine.
All right, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I had to unplug everything, so it took me a minute. All right, so we're all Zoom now. And L-Pack is recording through Zoom. So we're still working on the technology, and I guess is the best way to describe this. All right, um, do you want me to try to pick up where we left off in some way, shape, or form?
Okay, I will. Um, Rich, yeah, if you want to, uh, simply go over the phases of learning, please.
Okay, so I think the phases of learning in the last school committee meeting, the special meeting on September 8th, um, it was, I think, as I said then, um, a compilation of work done at the Superintendent's Association to try to help districts with identifying when it's time to shift from either remote to hybrid, hybrid to in-person, or to remote, whatever it might be. The challenge that, that we've had putting together something is, is, uh, that's acceptable to all, is the one-size-fits-all approach. The idea that every community's the same just doesn't exist. Worcester's different from North Burfield, it's different from, um, you know, vocational school that serves whatever, 10, 12, 15 communities. So there's no good one model that says, "This is when you should switch from one to the other." So, uh, what we did was we put together two pieces of information. One is, uh, ca- confirmed cases per 100,000 and the state of Massachusetts positivity rate as a guide, um, to assist in making transition decisions. Uh, the cases per 100,000 is that color-coded map that you see on the DPH website of red, yellow, green, or gray, I guess is the best way to describe the color that sort of outlines and defines how many cases per 100,000 your town has. And then the state of pos- state of Massachusetts positivity rate, um, has been, um, essentially, I think, um, sort of sent out on a daily basis as well. How many, just, uh, of the number of people tested, how many are positive. And they're shooting for less than 2% is what their real, their, their biggest goal is. Well, obviously, their biggest goal was to have it zero, but they, they like to see it below 2%. So, um, so at the last meeting, uh, the committee asked me to forward this to the Board of Health and back to the Superintendent's Association for some more help. I've done both. Uh, I spoke to Trevor Russo from the Board of Health today. He said he's not ignoring us. They are looking at it. They're gonna give us some feedback on it. Um, and, uh, the Superintendent's Association is sort of stuck because you have this, um, so many school districts are different. It just, as I defined, said earlier, that no school district is alike to others. It's all this local context that plays into the decision-making. So I don't know what we're gonna get from the, um, from the superintendents and from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I keep hearing that DPH might come out with some more guidance on this, but we haven't seen it yet. Um, and I think that's probably partly what the Board of Health would be waiting for, is they work under the, you know, the local Board of Health works under the Mass Department of Public Health. So they're sort of stuck in waiting to see what DPH might come out with. So I don't have a lot more information from the last meeting to share about this phases of learning piece other than the feedback continues to be that they are asking us, when I say "they," DPH and, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are encouraging, um, districts to use multiple weeks of data, to not, as the commissioner has stated, ping pong between learning models based on a day or a week's worth of data, because it could change, um, between yellow and green or gray on some, to some degree of regularity. And if every day that it changes, you're moving your learning model, then you have this huge, sort of, constant change that you never really get anywhere. So they're really encouraging, uh, three weeks of data was, is what they're really, sort of, the number they're pushing. But again, it's, it's, it's up to us as a community to decide what's right, because it may be cases where three weeks doesn't make sense. Uh, we've seen other communities where there's a huge number of people who are positive in a short period of time. They need to make quick decisions, and that's not three weeks. And there's other situations where making a quick decision isn't the right decision based on whatever the context of those individual circumstances are. So that's kind of the phases of learning document, I think, DPH and ultimately our local Board of Health. We really do need to weigh in, and I think, again, I know I said it probably two or three weeks ago, that there was information that they would be coming out with something to help us, but it hasn't come yet. So, um, so I just think that's that. Maria? Maria, you are muted.
Sorry. Um, so just, uh, wrap up DPH and DE- DESC, their advice is in, as to, in most cases, use three weeks of data, so, and also with the, the going between the phases of learning models. So to not make a rapid decision unless there's a large outbreak. And that is the advice that we have thus far. The Board of Health is looking at, at it and hasn't gotten back to us just yet. Um, so right now, we're gonna do public participation. Um, and because we do have other things we need to cover, we're gonna set the public participation at 20 minutes. Um, if you have a question about the situation that Mr. Lind, um, sent home a letter about today, and I'll ask him real quickly to just go over that again. Um, if you, in the chat, put, type your name and then type your question, and we will, um, spend about 15 to 20 minutes, uh, going over those questions. And then if you have further questions, um, you can email me at mtucker@nb schools.org, and I'll try to get back to you. So, Rich, can you just go over the, real quickly, the situation that you, um, shared with, um, the school community today?
Yeah, so, uh, we were informed that, uh, we had a member of our school community test positive after going through kind of the contact, contact tracing process. It determined that, uh, this person was out of school when they had contact and were tested and were positive. So the person was at home, essentially, when this all came out. So no members, staff or students would be considered having close contact with that's, uh, with that individual. So, um, I know that lots of folks are concerned and want, uh, more information. There's not a lot more to share other than that the person who is positive has not been in the building, essentially, um, from the time of, um, exposure and testing to now.
Um, can you, can you clarify the content of the letter? Because it sounded as though, um, it sounded as though they were exposed to someone who tested positive on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, so they were exposed to someone who tested positive on Wednesday, and they saw them after they tested positive?
They saw them, and then the person tested positive.
Right, so they would have seen them before Wednesday?
Uh, no. That's not, that's not, no, that's not the way it occurred.
Oh, it's not, okay. Because I would think that if someone tested positive on Wednesday, so they saw them on Wednesday? I mean, I'm just, because if I tested positive, I wouldn't come in contact. I'm trying to understand if they...
They saw them, and then the test occurred.
Right, okay, so they were, since they're symptomatic, they were likely symptomatic on Monday or Tuesday?
I'm not sure of that. I'm not privy to that. My understanding is that, um, they saw the person, then the person was tested, was positive, uh, they, they were informed of that, they went to get tested, and they were positive.
So this all ha- this all happened after their time, uh, in the school building?
The testing.
Building.
No.
The testing.
Everything.
Like, after they left on Tuesday, they saw the person after that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that is the case?
I, I just want people to understand, I have to be very careful here.
I totally understand, I totally understand. It's just the way the letter read.
I'm trying not to be, avoid questions, but I, I also have to maintain some level of confidentiality.
Absolutely.
Community, that every time I answer a question, that gives a, a further insight. I'm trying, I guess my...
Absolutely.
No one here, staff or student, was a close contact to the student, I feel like is pretty direct.
Oh, okay.
And people are asking, "Well, when?" Well, I'm telling you, there was no one here who was a close contact every time I answered a question.
Okay, okay. I, I think, I think...
I hope people understand.
No, I, I'm glad. I think that's good clarification, because I think there was some question.
I just want, you know, if you look at the letter, it says...
I did.
No one here, uh, no staff or students were a close contact. So I, and I'm trying to answer questions, because I know they're out there, and I want to provide that. But I, I want people to understand, I'm not avoiding questions, because I'm trying to hide something other than ensuring the confidentiality of students and staff and families. Because if it was any of our families, we wouldn't want that shared, uh, necessarily, um, so...
No, I don't think anyone's asking for the student's name or anything like that.
No, but...
But just clarification that, that, because I know these questions have come up.
Yeah, no.
So that's helpful, thank you.
In the letter, I thought I could put it clearly. Apparently, I didn't, but, uh, I thought it had said, you know, no staff or students were, uh, close contacts. So, um, essentially that, oh, sorry, can...
Um, I think, I understand the need to be vague and, and, you know, obviously, when you're, when you're, when you're vague, that's a... Um, I think, I, I understand the need to be vague and, and, you know, obviously when you're, when you're, when you're vague, second of course, you can take your full contact. I think this is an opportunity maybe, if you could just briefly discuss, um, how that contact process, without getting into detail, who, I think it, you maybe, maybe it can reassure people, show them example of, alright, we, we found out on Thursday that there was a positive interaction, good person interaction. Maybe you can just walk us through that really quickly on how, how that went down.
So we, we actually got a call.
And so give it the context and just to be sure to be specific, how we determined it.
Yeah. So we actually got a call from the family about the, the positive test. Um, we then reported to both the Department of Education and to the local Board of Health. Uh, the Board of Health checks through the DPH site to make sure that they're aware of it, and they were. Because a positive test from wherever they went to get tested gets reported to DPH. So it's trying to tie up all the loose ends. My report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, again, is not specific to any person. It's specific to a situation. They wanna make sure that they're available to help us with tracking or rapid response unit if there's a larger outbreak. Um, and double back as they need with DPH. So, um, the whole idea is that we're cross-referencing between school, healthcare providers and state and local health agencies, that they're all in the loop and they understand the, the exact situation. I'm not sure I answered your question, if that, with that answer though. Could I?
Uh, I was just, you know, so we, you first question, so we called the, 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 the situation, did you give the Board of Health, do I do? They may have had a contact from the time that you, you would imagine find out when they were in contact with other relatives that was positive.
Right. So, yeah, we, we find out sort of when and where everybody's been. I noticed that. And based on the timing, the student wasn't in the building from the time of contact to the time of a positive test. So whenever they had a close contact to, which was Wednesday, to the time they were tested, which was Thursday, uh, I'm sorry, which was, uh, Friday, um, they got the results. So they were not in the building at any point. And, uh, you know, we follow up with questions like, have they been in contact with anybody? Um, have they seen, you know, any other people that are, would have been in the building? Um, and according to the family, the incident was still. So-
Had it happened in school or had they been in school, it would have been a different sort of letter or based, based on who they could have interacted with?
Sure. If, if the, say the person who tested positive had been in school, the communication that we have, and it's in the protocols, but we have a, a series of letters. Uh, would have been, you know, for example, if it was in your child's, I don't know, third grade classroom, just something. Don't mean to pick on third grade, so don't be worried. Um, it would have been a letter to the students in that third grade classroom saying, your child was a close contact. They need to quarantine. Uh, we encourage you to see your physician. It would have been a very different letter. Cause at the junior senior high, where kids do move about and, and aren't necessarily co-ordered all day. Um, at the senior high particularly, um, again, we would have had to go through all the classes, say a student or a staff person was in. And all those people would get a letter saying they were a close contact. Others would get a letter saying there was a situation, but your child was not a close contact. So it depends on the situation of what the communication will be, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we actually got a comment in the chat, the, the, her, the email, she thanked you for that. I think that's-
Okay. Good. I'm, I'm, my intention was not to make it, uh, confusing and apparently I did. I apologize for that.
Well, everyone's conditioned to go into panic mode, so, you know, we just-
Me too. I try not to though.
I talked to Lucy and she was like, oh, the carrier is slowly walking, so we just wanna make sure we get the information out there.
Absolutely.
So if you couldn't understand, Tim, he was saying, someone in the chat said that, um, that explanation was much clearer than the email. And then just that this is a new situation for everybody and we're all trying to manage it. So is there any, um, in the chat, are there any questions about anything, any, anything else besides? Does anyone have any comments or questions about this, that particular situation?
Nope. Just hope everyone's well.
Yes. Agreed. Um, alright, so before I move on, I just wanna make sure, anyone have any, any of our listeners, any comments or questions? I don't see anything in the chat, so I'm gonna move on. Alright, um, so financial report. And again, I'm gonna ask you to be succinct, please.
Okay. So no major changes. The only big change that I can see coming is maybe is some, um, amendments to our, um, coronavirus, the various coronavirus relief, uh, grants that we have. Um, you know, there are some things we planned on that we don't necessarily allow to. Um, and there are some things that we planned a certain amount of money for and we need more or less. So we wanna adjust it accordingly. Uh, for example, we have some final repairs at the junior senior high, the HVAC system, some dampers and programming needs to happen. Um, we thought we were good there. Uh, it's, there's some additional expense with that. So we do need to move a little bit around, uh, on that and we have a couple of other items. So that's the major piece that you'll see next time in our, although you don't see that specifically, you see the total expenditure. Uh, but just so you know, uh, we are gonna amend those grants. And that's a pretty regular practice with our grants is to make some amendments to, to move things around as, um, often those are written weeks, months, even a year in advance of actually spending the money. So we often are estimating what something might cost or, uh, or guessing what we might need. It's educated guessing, but sometimes it turns out to be a little different. Uh, in terms of the, um, the, um, district budget, I think we're very much on track. We've updated, um, with the approval of the ESP's, uh, one-year contract. Salaries have been updated, so there'll be a bit of a change there in terms of the percentage. Obviously it will increase a bit, uh, but we're in good shape with that. Um, and just so you know, I can check off another thing from my report. All positions have now been filled. We don't have any open positions, I believe, for the entire district. We had a couple of instructional assistant positions that we've filled in. So, um, there are no open positions, which is great. So our, our budget is very much on track. Um, not a lot to report. I think we're still at the beginning and in a lot of ways, teachers and administrators are figuring out what they do need uh, to, to, uh, effectively do what we need to do this year. Uh, now that they have a full week in their, under their belt and we're into the second week, I think we'll start to see some of those expenditures creep back up. Um, for supplies and materials that there's, you know, that they really wanna, um, get to support students. So, um, not a lot to report other than we're very much on track for where we should be.
Alright, great. Um, so moving on to the administrative reports, uh, Ms. Powers and, um, Mr. Lind, if you wanna give us the high school report, middle school, high school?
Sure. Thank you. Um, so the first couple of days of school have been great. Uh, you know, I wanted to shout out and thank all of the staff, the faculty, the staff, the support staff, custodians, um, Allison Bolger and as the secretary, just everyone's really stepped up to make it, uh, positive and, um, very efficient couple of days of school so far. And like, uh, Mr. Lind said, we're into our second week, so we're definitely starting to get a groove. Um, al, almost every junior, senior high student has picked up their Chromebook and teachers have been using Chromebooks in and out of the classroom. So when students are at home for the hybrid model and also in the classroom. So it's been great to walk around and see a lot of, uh, technology in action. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to just say is that our parent teacher conferences for the fall is gonna be Wednesday, October 14th. Uh, we will send more communication out about that, but, um, just so everyone can kind of put it on their calendar for the 14th in the, in the evening from six to eight PM, we are gonna have virtual, uh, parent teacher conferences. So more information to come on that. Um, Mrs. Priestley?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I just wanted to echo what Ms. Powers said about the, um, coming back and it's been amazing, the kids, having them here, seeing them on their, um, remote classrooms with Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Servin. Um, it's just been really great to be with kids again. Um, so it's a huge thank you to all the staff that's been able to make that possible. Um, we are working on a back-to-school night, virtual style. It's gonna be kind of a Bitmoji style, so stay tuned as we work out the details on that. But I think it's gonna be really cool, uh, kind of a neat format for, uh, all the families to meet our teachers and kind of make it a little fun. So, uh, we do a picture day this week. Uh, oh, sorry, Mr. Lind, did you?
What's the, what's your projecting date for that April event?
We are, um, scheduled to have our back-to-school night on September 30th, so it's a week from Wednesday. We pushed it back a week just to give us more time to put the digital, uh, format together. And also because we, it feels like we just started since we got the late start with kids, so, um, it made sense to push it back. Uh, we do have picture day this week, so tomorrow is for our cohort A and C students. So A and then the C who are here four days a week. Um, and then on Thursday for our cohort B students and also our remote students have the opportunity to come in um, anytime between nine and two to get their, um, picture taken. That's it for me.
Alright, great. Mr. Manucci?
To be real brief, um, starting next month, I'm gonna have a, a bi-weekly communication call on Wednesday evenings. Um, kind of a takeoff from, uh, donuts with the director from last year. Um, and I'll be sending out an email to the whole community to do that. Also, uh, the, the CPAC has been reorganized and we will be starting up in October. And we, we will be starting those meetings off as Zoom meetings. Um, and again, I'll send out an email to the entire, uh, uh, school community for that. And that's all I have for today.
Um, actually, I, I wanna mention something about, um, something, uh, Project Mr. Manucci spearheaded. Um, with money and materials donated by the Rotary Club, uh, the Brookfields Angels Backpacks, Country Auto Body and Community Members. Um, Student Services Department at North Brookfield Public School has over 30 desk shields built and distributed to teachers and staff at all the schools in the district. Um, the shields have given students and staff protection and added peace of mind in delivering services to students. The initiative has spread and at least seven neighboring districts have started their own initiative and surrounding Rotary Clubs, including Sturridge Rotary are helping in the challenge. So we did share some pictures. They're basically, they go on top of a desk and, or a table and they're plexiglass and they're held together. They have, I don't know, pipes or something, PVC pipes for the sides, but it was really wonderful. Um, yeah. Uh, we get donations and help from Country Auto and, uh, I know also from the Rotary Club and some other groups. So it was really a great, uh, thing for the, the kids and the teachers to have. So thanks, Mr. Manucci.
You're welcome. Thank you, Maria.
Alright, um, so, uh, the curriculum, Mrs. Powers again?
Back to me. Thanks. Um, so I just wanted to touch base bef, since the last time we had our school committee meeting, we did have our professional development days at the beginning of the school year. I think over the summer, we thought, what are we gonna do? There's 12 days. We gotta plan it. And, uh, we did a really great job, um, as administrative team, putting together things that fit under our topics, which was technology integration, um, looking at diversity, equity and inclusion, safety, um, and building relationships with students. So it was a very successful 12 days. I really think that it was beneficial for us to use those days to get ready, um, for this unique year. And I would love to actually have more days before school starts in the future. Um, maybe not 12, but I do think having a few more really allowed staff to build on some of the things that they've been working on over the past few years. Um, and then just lastly, a shout out to, um, Mrs. Dubuque, who, who is running our mentoring program. Our new teachers all have a mentor and, um, they've been starting to meet regularly and really getting that program off the ground. So thank you to her, um, for making those connections and allowing our new staff to, uh, get the support they need, um, this year especially. So that's all. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so Mrs. O'Hara has a, a short report that, uh, Chromebook distribution started for the junior, senior high school last week. Um, and they have loaned also 32 iPads to students in pre-K first grade. Uh, for students in second through sixth, they've loaned about 65 Chromebooks to students. Um, there's a new tech assistant who's been a great help, Justin Hackinson. Um, the infrastructure upgrade has been completed. Uh, there is an access point in 95% of the classrooms in the district. Um, and then last but not least for me anyway, the Google app issues with the Google Suite for Education has been resolved, which makes my daughter really happy. So.
I had a question on Cindy's report. I saw that, uh, the eight Chromebooks that haven't been passed out yet. Do we know if that's a transportation or a timing or a financial with the insurance? Is it no big deal or is it something that people, that I can help with? Um, and I know, I'm not trying to get into privacy, but is it something that I can drop off at night? Like, everyone needs one.
Um, so it, I, I think, um, it, it varies for the reasons. Some, some students, um, are working remotely and they have a device at home. And we've told them, when you come back, they do need a Chromebook because we're trying to eliminate the personal devices on our network. They, there's a security issue with that, with malware and spyware and all that. So we're trying to eliminate the idea of personal, uh, you know, kids and staff personal devices on our network. Uh, but since, you know, some, some are working remotely, they don't need the Chromebook right away. Others, it's just, um, connecting with the parent and, you know, figuring out a time and, and those kinds of things. We've made accommodations. Uh, I don't think we need to drive to homes. We've asked them to just fill out the paperwork and email, let us send it in and we'll, we'll just take the parent, if the parent can't, we'll take their, uh, the paperwork that, that they're signing off on and we'll get it to, uh, get the, their student, their Chromebook. Any student that doesn't have a Chromebook, we give them a daily loaner. Uh, they do need it at home, but, um, we're in pretty good shape right now, but if we do need help, I'll keep you in mind.
Okay. Just curious if there is a place to step in?
Yeah, I'm pretty happy with the number, like, we're almost completely handed out. It's great. Uh, really super.
Uh, we did have a question on chat. Um, sorry, am I, am I muted?
No, you're good.
Okay. Um, the insurance cost is prohibitive to many families who are struggling right now. Are there accommodations for families who can't afford to pay the insurance for the Chromebook?
Yeah, we've paid accommodations for families, uh, for junior senior high families because they get them for three years and we're self-insuring. So we've, we're working with a, a company called Worth, the Worth Group. And so we need to pay the insurance bill so that if anything happens to them over those three years, we can get them repaired or replaced. Uh, we're, we're working with families when they need, uh, assistance, um, to try to, try to figure out how we can move forward. But yes, we are making accommodations.
Okay. Any other questions or any about that? Um, so last is Mr. Shaw's report. Um, and he says, school started and it's great to see staff and students in the building. Um, they've done all their yearly inspections of the fire alarm system, generators, elevators, and had our walkthrough with the fire department in the building inspectors. Um, and the Board of Health also did a walkthrough. Uh, the air, he's, the HVAC systems and equipment has been tested and they are still in the process of getting the vendors in. As you can imagine, all schools are doing the same thing and these vendors are doing all they can to get to each of us. Uh, Schneider Electric has evaluated our elementary system and they are working on programming to update the system for more outside air changes. They've gone through the system that they have control in the high school and I'll be meeting with them next week to review things. Um, they're going, uh, there's another company that is going through all the individual classroom unit events in the high school and have a couple more days of testing to complete. The elementary school has a different system, so should be less of an issue. And they conducted air quality testing and inspected the HVAC systems. And there will be a report issued, which will be a baseline for ongoing testings. His initial findings are that we are in good shape. And also that they're staying busy getting ready for fall sports. And as always, he thanks his staff for their hard work. All right. Any other, any questions about the reports? Nope. All right. So we do have to do a final approval of interscholastic athletics before they can begin. So there is information, if you want to give it to us really quickly, with the, how it's going to be set up.
I provided you the memo and it's essentially what we got last time, except for some bullet points on the top of page two. Mr. Sloan, our athletic director, who's part of these meetings, essentially everybody in Central Mass is playing as long as they're not red. And the only ones that are not red that aren't playing are vocational schools because there's just too many communities that are involved. They can't manage all those different possible community outbreaks that might happen. They put us in pods here. We're in pod number two with Bay Path, Crowdy, Lester, Quayborg, Shepherd Hill, South Bridge and Tantascwa. They tried to do it geographically to keep people closer together. We're going to play everybody at least once with the season ending in mid-November. And they tried to set up the meets so that it would be spaced out. So for example, cross-country, they'll be on Tuesdays and Fridays. Field hockey, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And soccer will be Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. So they're just trying to move things around. We've gone through signups to try to be ahead of the curve. And we can definitely have teams out there for each sport. There is a drop in participation, as you might imagine. Some of that has been people who are just concerned about the health of the public. And some is folks that have opted for other auctions, like playing AAU or club or some other thing because they feel the the guidelines are too strict. So it gets across the board from too strict to not strict enough, I guess. So it's all individual. I do think it's, it would be great if we can do it. I would recommend that the school can approve athletics. We will be working diligently, not only internally, but with other schools and communities to make sure their schools and communities don't have significant outbreaks, so to speak. But I think what they put into place, it is really strong. And I know we did have Mr. Sloan on here earlier. I don't know if we chased him off with our tech issues.
I'm here.
Oh, Kevin, jump right in if I missed anything. Please feel free.
No, you seem to cover everything. Like you said, we're in the pods. It's based on geography. It cuts travel down by like 20 miles or close to 20 miles on average. Less time on the buses for the kids who have to wear the masks. And limited amount of games just to get everybody out there. And all the ADs are in agreement that it's just kind of, let's just get them out there, have some fun. There's no playoffs. There's no tournaments to worry about or any of that.
So in terms of the buses, is the, I assume the setup is the same as the, when they're coming to and from school?
Yes, absolutely.
Will there be spectators allowed at the games?
So the Central Mass Athletic Association has decided that there will be one spectator per player for both, for home and away games. So like you could go watch Tyler play or you could pass it off to his aunt, but it's only one spectator per event.
All right. So if there's no other comments or questions for Mr. Sloan or Mr. Lind about the athletics, we have to vote on it? We would have to vote to approve it?
I move we approve.
All in favor?
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I was.
Elizabeth.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Sorry, I missed it.
All right, we'll go out there and have fun, kids.
Thank you.
And just a side note, have fun parents and others, but please remember that when we're on campus, we have a mask policy, we have requirements. And the only way we're going to be able to keep having games and activities like this is if we all follow those guidelines and rules. It's really important. I know it's frustrating at times and uncomfortable at times, but to be able to keep having school, to be able to keep having athletics, we really need people to adhere to those guidelines. If people aren't, we just can't have them. You know, I'll make that call if I need to. I know the school committee will as well. They want to make sure school opens as I do. We really just need your help, whether it's students, student athletes, coaches, parents, spectators, fans, et cetera. We just need everybody's help with this to add at work.
All right. If you want to play, follow the rules then, please. So moving on to, we have to update a policy. Is this the first reading?
It doesn't need to be the first reading.
Okay.
To the policy subcommittee, this is Collins and I going through some of the graduation requirements that existed in the past and some of the things that we've adjusted over time. Also, the idea of adding a digital citizenship course as a graduation requirement is something that we really think is important. We also have had, in my three years, a number of times where a student has transferred in a senior year, for example. And they can't meet a graduation requirement because it's just not enough time because their previous school didn't have that graduation requirement, where we have to waive it. It's just one of those, I think this is just cleanup, but I'd certainly like the policy subcommittee to look at it, maybe bring it to the next meeting for a reading and we can go through the three readings.
All right.
Give you a heads up and to remind Mrs. Powers and I to keep this moving forward.
Who's, sorry, I didn't know this. Who's our policy subcommittee?
So it's Maria and Tim.
Okay. So if I would like to make a suggestion to community service paragraph, do I just email them?
Yeah, well, me. You can send it to me and we'll, when we have our meeting, I think we're going to do one in October, we'll put it on there.
Okay, thank you.
So we have several items in new business that we have to vote on. Before we vote on the elementary school handbooks, is there anything significantly different that we need to know about the, either the elementary or the junior, senior high school handbooks?
I'll turn it over to Mrs. Priestley for the elementary.
I put in the changes, the biggest change, which is our inclusion of the restorative practices language. So that we are recognizing that we're not focusing just solely on punitive, the, you know, infraction and consequence system. But also realizing that behavior is a form of communication and that we want to work with students and work with their families to try to get at the root of the behaviors. So that we can teach them how to be better people. So that's our, that's in there now. So if you have any questions about that, you can let me know.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about the handbook before we vote to approve it? All right. So we need a motion to approve the elementary school handbook?
I can move that we approve the elementary school handbook.
And do we have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor? So just so you know, Tim is not doing motions because the audio on the computer he's using right now, which is mine, is really bad. So. Yes. So, all right. So the high, junior, senior high school handbook, are there any significant changes?
Nothing major. We've obviously updated all the names and dates. We updated the school committee policies and that goes for the elementary one as well. We adjusted the handbook with some of the important changes based on the reopening plan. But the great majority is similar to last year when we unified them all. Last year was the first year we unified them. So there wasn't a lot of work that needed to be done, mostly updating.
Anyone have any questions or anything? All right. So we need a motion to approve the junior, senior high school handbook?
Motion to approve the handbook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right. So next we have the improvement plans for both the elementary school and the junior, senior high. Mrs. Priestley, you want to hit the goals really quickly for the elementary school?
Sorry, I was just pulling it up. Yes. So goal one. If we provide more opportunities for families to engage with teachers and staff, then we will be more equipped to provide what students need, resulting in improved student outcomes. It's our belief that we really want to engage families in what we do here at school. That's very important to us. The second goal, if we implement a multi-tiered system of support, we can better address students' academic, behavioral, social and emotional needs, resulting in every student reaching his or her fullest potential. So taking a multi-tiered approach to address student needs is in all areas, academic, behavioral and emotional. So that's something that encompasses our PBIS work, our intervention work, our academic intervention work, the restorative practices, all of those elements really fit there. And then the last one is specifically focused on restorative practices, as this is a relatively new shift for us. If we implement restorative practices that promote inclusiveness, relationship building and problem solving in an effort to reduce disciplinary problems, then children will be involved and committed to their schooling, resulting in improved student outcomes. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? If not, we need to have a motion to a vote on the school improvement plan?
I make a motion to approve the school improvement plan.
Do you have a second?
I second the school improvement plan.
All in favor? All right. So the junior, senior high school, we have to go over that one real quickly too.
So the junior, senior high improvement plan, goal number one is that we build strong relationships with students and families. The students and families will feel more connected to our school, our district, our community, resulting in improved student outcomes. Interestingly enough, both schools are working on building relationships. And as a matter of fact, that will be a professional practice goal for every educator in the district. Teachers, teachers will all be working on building relationships. We think it's particularly important this year with six months out of school. Goal number two also addresses the multi-tiered system of support. If we implement that, we can better address students' academic, behavioral, social, emotional needs, resulting in every student reaching his or her fullest potential. Again, the idea is that we've been working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on a multi-tiered system of support. We've been working on PBIS, working on student assistance team to try and to increase academic support for all students. We've done a number of different things. We're trying to pull them all together into one sort of goal to move things forward. And then the last goal is we effectively integrate technology into teaching and learning. Student outcomes will be improved. Obviously, we have some huge technology initiatives going on. The one-to-one Chromebook initiative for one, you know, we implemented Edgenuity last year, I think very successfully for really a full first year. We hope to expand that. And we really want to move technology from just a get information thing to a two-way communication piece where teachers, students and parents can communicate with each other effectively. So those are the goals around that, junior, senior high.
So anyone have any questions? Then we need a motion to approve the junior, senior high school school improvement plan?
I can move that we approve the junior, senior.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next item is a request for transportation from a family of a grade 11 student.
Yeah. So I don't know what the policy was years ago, how the school district handled that, but I couldn't, I couldn't say that it didn't happen this way. But a student has been riding the bus for 12 years in their school choice. My policy says that I'm not supposed to, but I was informed that in the past, this may have occurred where administrators actually set that up. I have no documentation of that. That's just from the parent and from some staff that have been around saying, yeah, I think that may have happened. None of the administrators here were here during those, that time. I think based on what the parent is telling me, it sounds like it was set up. Obviously, this came to light for us as we did busing in this pandemic world. Where we had to limit the number of kids on the bus. So we actually sent invites to people. That's when the parent reached out and said, what? My child can't ride the bus. How are they going to get to school? We have been in this school for 12 years now. This is our 12th year. Can he get through now into 11th grade? It's impossible. I said, I cannot waive the policy. That is the school committee policy and that's that I could bring it to you as a committee and he asked that I do so. So I am bringing it to you. I think there's two things to consider here. One is the needs of that student. And second is the impact that it potentially could have that if other school choice families can, if that school choice family can have transportation, why can't they all? And I'm not sure what, what my answer is. So I guess at this point, I would recommend that we approve it and take up any other requests individually. I think based on longevity, I can make the argument that this student has been taking transportation forever, since they came here, 12 years of transportation. And if, you know, if others would want that, then I think we can take it up. In general, the policy is no, they won't take transportation. So it's a tough call. I totally understand, you know, where the parent is coming from. But I also know that transporting school choice students gets very difficult and may have an impact on the budgetary.
So just, just so people are clear, this student takes, he gets the bus at an established North Brookfield route. So it's not like a bus is going out of town to pick him up. So obviously he's brought to a bus stop in North Brookfield. You know, I see the issue that, you know, potentially people might bring this. Um, you know, I I see the the issue that, you know, potentially people might bring this up again, but since you know, this has been going on for so many years and the the student is in, you know, eleventh grade, I I personally don't have an issue with allowing this one student to continue doing this until they finish.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, you know, unless there were a situation where um a school choice student were pushing the number of students over the limit, where we needed to then get more buses. I mean, that could be a situation where we crossed that bridge when we came to it, but assuming that that's not the case, I feel really comfortable with just allowing it to continue, based on past precedent.
Yeah, right now, that is not the case. We're not in danger of going over the twenty-five students.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Um, Tim, it's it's not real great. Do you want to uh just text me and I'll I'll read your comment? Or question? So we're just gonna wait for Tim here to let us know what he wants to say. It'd actually probably be quicker for me to like walk. There we go. Um, so we are voting to approve this one student, not voting to change the policy. We're going to keep the policy in place. And yes, that is what.
We waived the policy for this student.
So the policy will continue to exist. We are waiving it for this one student in this situation. Is that, hey, Tim, give me a thumbs up. Where are you? Okay. All right, um, does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, uh, I need a motion to approve the uh waiving the policy, the school choice, uh, the the policy for this student.
I make a motion to approve the policy for that said student.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, um, so last, we have a a number of donations from the PTO. Um, and so I'll just read them off real quickly and then if I could ask one of the other school committee members to um ask for a motion to approve them. So the PTO approved two hundred and ten dollars for Mrs. Marr for a scholastic subscription, one hundred and fifty-one fifty-eight for Miss Lacoys for classroom library books, sixty dollars for grade five for chair bands, uh, up to one hundred and sixty-five dollars for wiggle seats for grade five, one hundred and sixty-five dollars to Mrs. Martin for a scholastic subscription, and one hundred and twenty-five dollars for Mrs. Martin for Generation Genius. So just a motion to approve all of the PTO donations.
First, can I ask the wiggle seat is? Because that sounds super fun. Is that to keep them in their seat or is that fidget seats or?
Um, my understanding is a wiggle seat is something that, actually, Mrs. Priestley, you know what it is, don't you?
Um, the wiggle seats, the ones that you sit on and they wobble? Yeah, they're for um fidgety students.
So it's so Tim wants one, so we'll uh we'll send information so you can get one for your for your office, all right? I'm sure your your supervisor will pay for it. All right, so um any other questions? So we need a motion to approve the PTO donations.
I make a motion to approve the PTO donations.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, if there's no no other comments or questions in the chat, then we're gonna have a move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I am gonna continue to work and try to figure out the technology, but there's no easy answer up here. We've asked a lot of different people.
Yeah, we'll we'll keep trying. All right, bye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.